All right. Good evening, folks. This is the Planning Board meeting for the town of Newbury. And I'm just going to read some open jury remarks. As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm the Chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morse. I believe George is going to be absent tonight. Larry Murphy. And Martha, Larry's also going to be absent tonight?
That's correct.
Okay, Leslie Matthews.
Here.
Woody Knight.
Yeah.
Mary Stone, and Mary Stone's also going to be absent this evening. Town Council, Brian Winner. And I believe he's also going to be passing on this evening. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Here.
Great. Emily Noel.
Here.
Great. Anticipated speakers or presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Christopher York.
Here.
Great. Eva and Fred Jackman.
Here.
Great, thank you.
Hello.
Great. Anthony Guba.
Don't see him yet, but he is going to be here.
Okay, Gary Hebert.
And he will not be here.
Okay, and Kevin Whitney.
He's here.
Okay, so some introductory remarks. Good evening, this is December the 2nd, 2020. Open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we have been advised indirectly by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order supersedes the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can be, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the Planning Board's section of the town website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join by going to http/zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056, or by calling 19292056099 and entering the ID number 83271413056. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants and/or the representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, shall share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. So here are our ground rules. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate minutes. I, as a Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone, which is done by *6 to toggle to mute or unmute, or on your computer, the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor and you can state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With you guys to public comments, there will be an opportunity for public comments and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom Raise Hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, click on the Participants button in the menu on the photo gallery at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Hover your cursor over this area if you don't see it. A list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of the Participants area, you will see an option to click Raise Hand button. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in the Zoom, hit *9 on your keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order which they are listed. The system lists in order who first raised their hand in the Raise Hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford applicant or participant, or his or her representatives, an opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of the Raise Hand column and again afford a participant, applicant, representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical or electronic submittals of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, participants, applicants, representatives will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not been addressed. Each vote taken tonight will be conducted via roll call. All right, so let me pop this down. And just for informational components, our agenda tonight is to have three public hearings. I want people to know that the AL Prime Gas Station and Convenience Store and Coffee Shop public hearing will be continued. And this is because we do not have enough board members to allow the meeting to take place. And when we get to that point in our agenda, we will then determine the time and date for that. So if you're waiting for that, I just want you to know that that is going to be continued. And Martha, we're good with the continued public hearing for 68 Green, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we will still be having the public hearing for the site plan review of a new building contractor's storage on 84 Boston Road. Okay, so our public hearings will start at 7:15. We don't have any submissions or appearances. Let me just pull up the financial report. So we are required to record this. So this will be the Planning Board financial report. For November of 2020, payroll and invoices authorized. First is payroll warrants for town planner and planning administrator, PR 21-10 for pay period ending 11/7/2020, and PR 21-11 for pay period ending 11/21/20. Planning Board expenses of Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad for 11/24/20, and peer review invoices escrow account for Joseph S. Walker for 68 Green Street on 11/24/20, 84 Boston Road for 11/24/20, and 23 Chandel Drive Extension 11/24/20. And that is the financial report. And I can minimize that aspect. Okay, let's see. Martha, on our agenda, we do not have any old business. And we do not have any new business. Leslie, do you have anything to report on the Select Board?
Most of the Select Board had a public hearing, where there was a tax clarification. And the rest of the basic discussion was the Newbury Council on Aging is going to send a survey out so they can figure out how to move forward with a new area for their, to get out of the round school and get into a new building. And there was an appointment, Janine Cunningham, for the Council on Aging too. Other than that, kind of a quiet evening.
Leslie, are they looking for a new building, or are they looking for an existing structure?
Either or. But they're trying to figure out exactly, you know, the size and condition that will be conducive for the elderly people. And they want to be able to introduce a lot of new programming that will get the older people out of the house and give them purpose, give them something to do. There's a new head on the Council of Aging too. And it looks like they're really dedicated to this program and they're working very hard on it.
Great, great. Well, I will appreciate that as the years are getting closer with regards to visiting and participating. Great, thanks. We don't have a ZBA report. Do we have an MVPC report by chance?
We do. Not too much to report. We had a meeting a week before Thanksgiving. And a lot of it was really spent talking about the different programs that MVPC has got going on. Excuse me, they're different, the environmental and economic development, the housing and all of that kind of stuff. And it was an update from their members. So a lot of, lot of good work going on there. They've also been very active in helping communities with COVID-19 planning efforts and things like that, especially communities with more commercial development than we have, you know, as far as restaurants are concerned and that kind of stuff.
What are they doing with respect to that, Martha?
I think they've been working on various grant programs and things like that. And guidelines for outdoor dining and that, that kind of stuff.
Great, so these would be grant programs in addition to the triple P that was, was put forth.
In addition, but related to that as well.
Great, that's necessary and needed. Good, good, good. That's it for MVPC?
Yep.
Okay, let's see, Conservation. Conservation met last night. The town has asked for a continuance on the Emergency Access Road. The Conservation Committee is doing something, some of this, what we were, exercise we've been doing with regards to a new bylaw. And so there was a good amount of discussion as to what formation or what formula that bylaw would look like, whether it looked like a Newbury Port, a Ipswich, Gloucester, or Raleigh, or a combination of such. And as you know, we have kind of a unique situation. We have a barrier island, we have inland area, we have Byfield, we have Newbury. So from a conservation standpoint, it's going to be initially challenged. The end of the night, the discussion concluded that there would be a subcommittee of three that would basically spearhead the, a lot of the due diligence and going through the documents and coming up with recommendations with insight from legal counsel as to the best way to facilitate that, to make a working document through the Conservation Agent, which would then be circulated back to the board. And that vehicle would be continued to be employed as the months go along. They're hoping for a spring meeting by law, with an understanding that it probably, the reality is it might be more of a fall meeting agenda item, just because of the amount of time and effort to get through the process and what it will take to get there, as we know, with different notifications that need to take place. So that's what's going on with Conservation. And I think we have a sidewalk Sunday, and there's been a lot of activity. So it's been, it's been busy, they've been busy as we have as well. All right, let me pull up, do we have anything else to discuss, Martha?
Not unless you want me to give a very brief planner's report.
Oh, go ahead.
Not much to report. I did get an inquiry today from Steve Sawyer, who is, wants to meet regarding the Two Old Point Road project,
Okay.
which was just approved by the ZBA. I think they were granted a use, use variance, I believe.
Okay.
And so they want to move forward with the site plan review application and hopes to get on our agenda as soon as possible. So I'm going to set up a meeting with him and see what's, see what's involved.
Perfect. Perfect.
We have a.
Go ahead, Woody.
We have a sidewalk next week, right, next Thursday?
Martha, do we have a sidewalk next Thursday? Because I don't, I don't have my calendar up right now, I just have the agenda in front of me.
Um.
11:00 AM.
Oh.
We can confirm that, yeah.
Yes, yes.
I was just kind of making sure my notes are right, I guess.
You're probably right, Woody.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to.
I thought it was tomorrow, and I just looked. I think it's next Thursday.
All right.
So I'll. Yep. So thank you for the reminder.
Yes. Perfect timing, we have 7:15. So we will start our public hearings. First, we have continued public hearing for definitive subdivision plan application for Farmview Lane, 68 Green Street map, R 35 lot, 21 owner applicant, 68 Green Street Realty Trust, Eva Jackman trustee. This is continued from November 18th of 2020. And where are we right now with this, Martha, just so I'm on the right page?
So I think where we are, we reviewed last time the, the first draft of definitive subdivision plan decision. And some revisions had been made, that sent out to the board. And there was another tweak based on some back and forth with their engineer, Chris York. So I think tonight primarily, we need to go through the revisions and particularly on the conditions. I think in order the board could vote to approve the decision, approve the project, and close the public hearing potentially.
Let me see if Chris has anything to add. Chris, do you have anything tonight that you want to add to this, or?
Nothing yet.
Okay. Hopefully, yeah, good, good, good.
We can go from there.
Okay. Hey Martha, do you want to do some screen sharing so we can just take a look at the draft?
Sure, let me see if I can do this.
Okay.
So can you see that?
We can see it, perfect.
Do you need me to make it bigger?
Maybe bigger would be a little bit better for these tired eyes, even though, oh, that's almost perfect. Leslie, how does that look for you?
Pretty good.
Okay, good. All right, so where are we with the modifications or revisions that we need to consider?
So I'll just go down. We went through last time sort of the, the basic language. The board went through the waivers, the list of waivers. I don't think there were any concerns or issues there. So the outstanding items really were the conditions. And the revisions were based on some comments from Joe, some things that he had suggested get included as, as conditions. And some, some other things that had come up regarding how they were going to deal with rock and ledge removal and that kind of stuff. So the, the changes are in red, I can go through them if you'd like, or?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just doing the highlights, that'd be wonderful, thank you.
So under declaration of, so number one, Declaration of Homeowners Trust, I just added some language to specifically call out snow plowing and dust control and maintenance of the stormwater system as shown on the plan. And then a condition requiring that the gravel surface be, be in, completed before any occupancy permits are issued to provide for adequate access. Slight change in the language for the subdivision road, that it will remain private in perpetuity. Then a condition regarding rock and ledge removal, to state that hydraulic hammers and similar equipment may be used for rock and ledge removal. There should be no blasting on the site. A butter shall be notified at least seven days in advance when rock and ledge removal activities are scheduled to take place. Same Board of Health, copies of the design for this individual septic system shall be submitted to the board. And I think actually, unfortunately, I grabbed the wrong version. Lot grading plans. States all grading on individual lots should be done in accordance with the approved Post Development Watershed Plan and Sheet 5, the grading plan of the approved definitive subdivision plan to ensure that stormwater drainage patterns as designed are not altered or adversely impacted during or after construction. There's a sentence in here in the, the next version, which I didn't grab unfortunately, that basically says that grading shall not increase runoff to the constructed wetland. And then grading plans for the individual lot shall be presented to the planning director and the planning board's review engineer for review prior to issuance of building permits.
Okay.
And the rest of it remains as it was.
Okay.
So I apologize for grabbing the wrong.
That's okay, that's okay. Quite understandable too. Okay, so I think everybody in the board has seen this. We've maybe seen this draft a couple of times. Let me just see if there are any questions. Leslie, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, great. Woody, do you have any questions?
No, no, I do not.
Okay, Martha, I just want to confirm that you're comfortable with how it is?
Um, I am. I guess upon a question, we go to Chris and the Jackmans to see if they're comfortable.
Okay, Chris, any concerns?
No, I'm good with it.
Fred or Eva, do you have any concerns?
No, we don't.
Okay, great, great. Martha, do we need to read through the conditions, or have we done that enough, do you think?
It's really up to you. I think, I think we've done them enough.
I think so too. Good, I'm glad we're getting that, that arrow there. Okay, with that said, let me see if there's any public comment out there from anyone. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment or concern to express to the board? Do you see anything, Martha?
I'm not seeing anything, but I think my screen sharing is blocking.
Interesting, so maybe we'll bump down the screen here.
Sure.
And I'll get Carol in, okay. We're multitasking, I like that. Good, okay. All right. So where was I? I changed screens on myself and I got confused. Give me just a second. Okay, so there are no additional comments, there's no no other concerns. Then if that's the case, I just want to see if all board members are comfortable to vote on this. Leslie, are you comfortable to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, Woody, are you comfortable to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, if that's the case, then I would entertain a motion to, to close the public hearing.
Approve the.
Oh, approve before we, thank you very much, Martha, I'm jumping ahead of myself, aren't I? I would like a motion to approve the draft decision.
Motion to approve the draft decision for 68 Green View Lane.
Thank you, beautiful, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. I need discussion on the motion. I don't see any heads bobbing. Okay, Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Okay, Woody, how say you?
Yes.
And the Chair is also in favor. Okay, that being the case, thank you Martha for the, for the housekeeping. I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
To close the public hearing for 68 Green Street, Green View Lane.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all right, you ready to vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Yes.
Martha, I mean Peter? Yes. Okay, Martha, any housekeeping on this that we need to think about?
No, I will get the final version ready and get that out for you guys all to same process as before, if that works for everybody. If not, we can figure out something different.
I think that would be great, very good. Eva and Fred, we appreciate your patience throughout this process. And we wish you well with this project and hope everything goes smoothly.
Right, so there are a couple of other items. So once it's signed, I'll file it with the town clerk, that will start the appeal period. But before the plan can be endorsed, we do need to get some, some form of performance guarantee from, from you all. So we can talk about that offline, I think, if you'd like. You know, there's some options.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, anything else? Perfect, great. Well, let's continue on our agenda. Our second public.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Welcome. All right. Be well, guys, and good luck. Our next is a continued, was to be a public hearing for AL Prime Station Convenience Store. Unfortunately, we're going to need to continue this public hearing as we do not have enough board members to open this public hearing. So we're going to need to continue both of the site plan review application as well as the special permit application. Tony, I apologize for this, but we do have some health issues going on with board members and we just have to be accommodated to everyone in this situation. So, and for any people that in the audience that have joined us for this, again, my apologies that we can't have this discussion tonight. We can't have any discussion on it, as we will not be opening the hearing. So we need to look at our schedule, Martha, for what looks best. And I think we were briefly discussing before the meeting started that the next meeting that the Planning Board has is looking very full. We have three public hearings and two of them, one is combined with the Select Board and the other is going to be probably a pretty lengthy discussion. And then our next meeting date is?
My screen is doing something.
Yeah.
I'm watching people appear in different, different areas.
I'm not quite sure what happened here.
Okay.
I'm going to stop hearing and see if, see if I can do this again.
Okay.
Is that better?
It's working, there we go, cool. So we have three, three continuances. And then we, the November, December 2nd. So we're here on the 16th. It's going to be busy. So it looks like January 6th, we have a pretty open docket at this point in time. Let me ask the applicant if that would be an acceptable date. Tony, would that be an acceptable date for AL Prime and its team?
Yeah, we'd like to go as soon as possible. If you're full up on December 16th and January 6th, sounds like it's the date.
Okay, great. Martha, would we be doing a 7:15 kickoff time?
Yes.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion for continuance of both, both components for the 6th of January at 7:15. And it'd have to be, I think, two separate motions. One for the site plan and one for the special permit. And Martha, make sure I'm just correcting my statements.
That's probably the cleanest way to do it.
Okay.
Motion to continue to January 6th, 7:15, for site plan review application, AL Prime.
Okay, is there a second? Grading discussion on the motion. Okay, I'll do a roll call. Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Woody?
Yeah.
And Chair is in favor as well. Okay, is there a second motion, Leslie?
Motion to continue special permit application, AL Prime, driveway through operation, January 6th, 7:15.
Great, is there a second?
That's second.
Beautiful, any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, Leslie.
Yes.
Okay, Woody?
Yes.
And the Chair is in favor as well, beautiful. Tony, thanks for your patience. Good holiday greetings and stay safe, and we'll see you on the 6th of January.
Same to all of you, and I hope the other board members feel better soon.
Thanks very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Martha, I think we can probably exit the screen share and let me see where we're at now. So next on our agenda is going to be a public hearing for a site plan review application for a new office building and site contractor storage. 84 Boston Road map, R 36 lot 23A applicant is K and R Construction Company Owner Sled Road LLC. Who will be speaking to us this evening, Martha?
Now, Chris will. Kevin Whitney's here, I'm not sure if he's going to speak.
Okay, who would like to kick off?
I can kick off.
Okay, do you want to screen share it too, Chris?
Yeah.
We need to have the public hearing notice read.
Oh, please, Leslie, did you get that public hearing?
I do not have it. Can you screen share it now?
Yes, I can share it.
Thanks, Martha, appreciate that. I'll get the door.
Can you read that?
Yep. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020, at 7:15, the Newbury Planning Board will hold an online virtual public hearing via Zoom to consider a site plan review application submitted by K and R Construction Company for the new office building and site contractor storage on property located at 84 Boston Road, map R 36 lot 23A. Property owner, Sled Road LLC. The proposed development is shown on drawings entitled Plan of Land in Newbury, Mass. At 84 Boston Road, dated July 20th, 2020, revised September 30th, 2020, and described in supporting documents, all as prepared by Millennium Engineering, Inc. for K and R Construction Company, LLC. The application on file with the town clerk and in the Planning Board Suite 101, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Mass. A digital or hard copy may be requested by emailing planningboard@townofnewbury.org. The application may also be viewed on the Planning Board section of the town's website. For more information, contact the Planning Office at 978-465-1711. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development should appear at the designated time, place, and place. Interested persons may participate in the meeting from their computer tablet or smartphone at HTTPS dot, excuse me, backslash US02web.zoom.us backslash J83271413056, or by telephone by calling 1-929-205-609. Using US and using meeting ID 83271413056. Or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel 9 at www.tncTV.org. The virtual meeting connection information will also be included on the December 2nd, 2020 planning board agenda, which will be posted on the Town of Newbury website no less than 48 hours prior to the meeting. Peter Pagos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
Leslie, thank you very much, could you read that HTTP address again, I'm just kidding, no, thank you.
I don't know, I think because it's in blue, it was.
Well, it's hard, it's very hard, I mean, we have so many numbers to read on that screen, okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you for reading that notice, and with that, we can kick off, Chris. Oh, Martha has her hand up for one more thing, thank you Martha, go ahead.
Um, I just want to note that Chris York did drop off the, the tear sheets from the Daily News and the green card, green return receipt cards, it looks like everything was mailed out and everything came back except for, I think, the Grove on Planning Board, is that right, Chris?
You bet, correct.
Okay.
Martha, thank you for keeping the details detailed, I appreciate that. Okay, alright, Chris, this is the third time I'm gonna try to give it to you, you ready?
I'm ready, Martha, can I share my screen?
Yeah, now, do you want, is it, it's your desktop that you want to share?
Desktop, yep.
Okay, hold on just a sec. Alright, you should be set to go.
Alright, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. How's that?
Good.
Okay.
Okay for me.
Alright, so this is a site plan for 84 Boston Road, we are located across the street from the town landfill. Sled Road is to the north. And the Newbury self-storage site is over here to the west. The site is entirely wooded, forested property. Pretty, pretty good amount of slope on this site, we've got some ledge out crops out in the front. Kind of in the middle of the property that around elevation 32. And down by the wetlands, we're on elevation 12. Is a bordering vegetated wetland here, the northwest corner of the property. And there's additional one across the street in front of the landfill on Boston Road, and another one off our site to the south here. I will move on to the site plan briefly. So. We have a 7,400 square foot building, this will be an office, office and a storage building for K and R Construction's site operations. Showing a paved apron around the building of about 40 feet wide, 30 feet wide on the side, we got two entrances, we got one on the south side. This will be for some of the company's bigger trucks that come into the site, they need to access the back of the property in the back of the building, they'll come in. The southerly entrance, they'll be able to turn around and back into the building. Then they'll be able to turn around and head back out. We have another entrance here, kind of centered on the property, this is more just for the you know, passenger vehicles, there'll be one or two office workers in the site, in the building at all times. Most of the, you know, most of the workers for the company will be going to the site directly. So there really won't be any cars parked here during the day, other than the one or two for the office workers. We've got, working on, as we have a septic system design ongoing, the septic system will be on the southerly side of the building. We've got the garage, all the grading for that in a minute. Little reserve area as well. We show some dumpsters out here in the back. We could catch basins scattered throughout the site, I'll show that on the next sheet, that shows more of the grading. See what else I can show on this, I gotta get some snow storage here on the north side of the site, some more here on the south side that would kind of, you know, for this parking lot out front. We show 10 parking spaces out front. We show says that the paved apron around the building, other than that, the rest of the site will be gravel. To be gravel storage area behind the building, and that's gravel storage area over here on the north side of the building. We'll have two, each entrance will be gated, the swinging gate for security purposes. On this driveway, one on this driveway. And move on to the grading sheet. It goes into more detail on how the site looks grading wise. So we got catch basin scattered throughout the site. We got one, two, we got five catch basins, couple manholes. Everything's gonna ultimately flow to a constructed wetland down here on the northwestly corner of the site. This is sized for the 100 year storm, we'll treat all the storm water before it discharges out to the existing BBW. We show there's a good amount of walls on the site, that came up as one of Joe's comments. And we show walls along the southerly property line. Then we show the length of wall, basically kind of hugging the edge of the wetlands, and then extends out here to the north side of the property. The walls get pretty high in spots, especially the corner down here, we're about eight, nine feet high, the wall. So one of Joe's comments is ultimately, we need to do a, you know, have to have a wall structurally designed by a structural engineer as part of the condition of approval. We show some landscaping out front, we can kind of discuss that, I guess, at some point. I didn't want to go into too much detail on landscaping, I didn't want to spend all the money on our landscape architect, if we don't need to do that, I just kind of showed some ornamental trees kind of scattered throughout the site, kind of along the frontage. Kind of buffer the site a little bit, and we show some areas out front for a mulch area showing some perennials and annual flowers. Move on to the rest of the sheets are just details, details. And then we show a lighting grid, so we have combination of some wall-mounted lights along the along the building on all four sides, and then I think we show three pole-mounted lights scattered throughout the site. That's about it, we just sent, Joe wanted me to show a turning template, the truck turning template plan, just to show that some of the bigger vehicles can get into the site, we can back into the building. Then ultimately, they can get back out. So that's, that's the quick and dirty couple architectural renderings of what the building will look like. I can kind of stop there for now and take any questions from the board?
Okay, let me start first with Martha, any initial comments on this?
Um, I do, actually. And I also have some, some comments from departments, but we'll get into that later. I think one thing that might be helpful actually would be to get some sections through here because of the walls, to get a better sense of actually what's happening, I know there's some walls along the driveway, along the southerly portion. And also, as Chris pointed out, in the back there. So I think it's, it's a little, little hard to kind of tell what, what some of those elevations are without looking more closely at the grading plan. I didn't see a setback of the building from the property line, I know there's 24 feet to the parking spaces, but I didn't actually see a setback there, so.
It's hard to see, kind of faded a little bit, we chose shows along here and I'm trying to label it a couple, there's another building setback.
Yes, I saw that, but with the actual setback of the building itself, is it right at, is it right at 50 feet from the front?
Not quite, it's setback of quarter cell from that.
Okay.
So I can add dimensions under the plan.
Yeah, that would be helpful. And then, just to clarify, it said there's the sort of paved around the rest of it is gravel, but I'm assuming that the area where the septic system is in this kind of second snow storage, I assume that's grass?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it would be helpful to get that that labeled. One of the things that I had the most concern about actually is the lighting. As the photometric plan indicates that there is lighting spilling off of the site. And it doesn't appear to me that the light fixtures that are specified here that we have cuts for are actually have any kind of cutoff. And I didn't see any color temperature for those. There are so many options these days that are kind of dark sky compliant, and I think it would be very helpful to see to see that there, to make sure that there's no light trespass off the site. And also to get as low color temperature as possible, you know, 3,000.
Okay, and these are the same lights we've used throughout everywhere, pretty much, the same ones we used for Newbury self-storage, they're, I mean, they're all down facing.
Yes, they, yeah, but they, they're not shielded, and you know, we've gone through that exercise at Newbury self-storage of trying to get some of them shielded to prevent the trespass off the, off the site, and that's an ongoing, kind of an ongoing project there. But it would be nice to, you know, just kind of start here. Having fixtures that you know, that, that are compliant.
But the issue, the issue was shielding a couple of these, actually, there's two kind of right smack dab in the middle of the parking lots, I can't really shield those, because those are lights on both sides of the pool. So they need to ultimately kind of spray outwards to get this whole area.
Well.
I think, Chris, you need to hear what Martha's trying to tell you.
Okay.
I, I think it would be good to look at it and see what other options there are. You know, we understand you need to have that covered. But I guess one related question is, what hours would you be intending to have these lights on? It looks like you don't, you're not intending to have any nighttime operations, and that's another question I had.
Okay, I'd have to, yeah, I'll ask Kevin what ultimately what he wants for time on that.
Um. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, as far as nighttime operations, there, there will be no one working at night. Any lighting that's there is more of a security lighting, but as far as the two light poles that are in the parking lot, I don't object to making changes to that if needed. To um definitely reduce the amount of light that's leaving the property, it sounds like that's an issue. We could go more with lights that are just mounted to the structure that wouldn't emit all the way into the woods or anything, you know? So we could definitely review that, that I'd be okay with that. It would be nice to have a couple lights on in the building, just as a security measure.
Yeah, so maybe if we could get a better idea of which, which lights you would want to have on for security measures and, and just look at some other options.
Okay.
That would be very helpful.
Yep. We can review that, not an issue.
Appreciate that, thank you. And my other comment really had to do with the architetchals are pretty sketchy right now, you know, what we're seeing is a pink building, I'm not sure that that's exactly what you're intending here.
No, that's just a generic color they threw on it, um, that's not the color of the building. We're actually looking into either like a tan colored or like a dark green colored, something that will end well into the environment. This is just a rendering that we've put together, we're still in the design phase of the actual building.
Okay, because that is one thing, the board reviews as part of the site plan review, so if you, you know, if you're able to get us updated drawings.
Okay. And this is the dimensions of the building and the door layout and the windows and all that. And the pitch of the roof will be like that, and the foundation and whatnot.
Alright, so it's a pretty low, low pitched roof.
We just haven't chosen a color yet.
And I know the building inspector, when you go for permitting, is gonna actually need to see the, the interior layout with bathrooms and all of that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Do you have an architect working on that, or is?
You do, yes.
Alright, so you know, the planning board doesn't need to see that, but the building commissioner will.
Yes.
So if you can get, you know, get updated exterior architetchals, that would be very helpful. So that the board can assess that as well as part of the process. Um, I will, if it's okay, I will mention now the you know, the, the fire department did have some comments, they're pretty preliminary, but I think they're going to want to make sure that they can get their apparatus to, you know, three sides of the building. Key boxes installed on the building and gates, commercial fire alarm system monitored by a fire alarm company. You said the building 7,400 square feet, so it sounds like it doesn't need a sprinkler system, but we can double check that with the chief. And they're looking to see more detailed site and building plan at some point to assess what other requirements might be necessary. So, Chris, would it be possible for you to, in addition to the, you know, sort of the vehicle turning diagrams that you have here, include or add one for fire apparatus, the biggest truck that they've got?
Sure.
Thank you, those are, those are all my comments right now.
In the preliminary look, Leslie, do you have any initial comments or concerns?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Great, thanks, Woody?
No, I do not.
Okay, hey, Martha, do we have an aerial view of this? Because I'm, I just want to get a kind of an appreciation of what's there now and where this lays on top of that, do we have that by chance?
Um, I don't have one handy, I can, I could create one from my map, but it would take me.
Okay, alright, so let me ask Chris, Chris. I, I just want to understand, so make sure that I and the board members know where this is, the, the access road that was created, where is that in relationship to the diagram that we're looking at right now?
In the access road that they did to get out to yes, Newbury, so it's on the southerly side of the site, it's we stayed, they stayed outside the 100 foot buffer zone. The 100 foot line is here and here, so they came in kind of through, kind of through here, kind of straight across where this guardrail is.
So is that where the entrance will be for this facility now?
I'm sorry?
So you're gonna have two entrances, an entrance is where that's going to be, or is there, is there going to be another entry point?
This was, this is a, the one that they built for the, the construction out back is the temporary one. Kind of, it's kind of in between where the proposed two entrances will be.
Okay, so before you move your cursor, where is that road right now, that, that, that temporary road?
Right about in here.
Okay, and where's the new road going to be?
The, to the entrance for the larger trucks is right here on the southerly property line. And then the second entrance is right here, kind of almost, almost dead center on the site.
Okay. Okay, because I, I was quite, I was quite impressed at the clearing and the vantage point that you can get from Boston Road now to pretty much Route 1-ish with that access road that was created. Okay, along that line, and I think, I think Martha's hit on, I think lighting is going to be a very large concern. Because there's already a significant amount of light that's exiting from the pre-existing site, now that we have that access road created. Have you seen that at night, Chris? Have you seen that at night, Chris?
I have not seen it at night, no.
Okay, I, that might just be a, a thought. Hey, so, um, this is in conservation right now, right?
Yep, we went before them. Early November, we had a site walk. Few weeks ago and we'll go before them again next Tuesday.
Okay, great, 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 great. Uh, any hazardous materials going to be stored in the building? Uh, no, just, you know, typical, uh, you know. Motor oil, you know, no major, no major repairs there, but motor oil. Nothing that you wouldn't have in a standard homeowner's garage. Alright. Yeah, those are the kind of preliminary questions, uh, that I have, um, at this time. Martha, what are our next steps here?
Actually, I have another question, um, if I may.
Yeah.
Our couple more questions. One, um, are you planning to store any site construction materials on the site?
What, what type of materials? I mean, and we intend, uh, on the property, we'll store occasionally like an excavator or a dump truck out there. Uh, we, we have a few dump trucks that will be stored on the property. And we'll store equipment inside the structure as well.
Okay, but you're not planning to store, say, gravel or mulch or stone or anything like that?
No, that's not the intended use of the property.
Okay, alright. Um, and then the second question, going back to what the chair was saying. Given that there was a fair amount of clearing done between your property and the self-storage site. What is the intention to restore any vegetative screening that existed there?
Well, our, our intentions are to clear for the building and all the, the, uh, gravel parking and the pavement. Um, along the edge of the road, along the existing country stone wall. We plan on planting, you know, small pine trees of whatnot to, to create some sort of a buffer. Um, and then like Chris said, we'll have some landscaping around the septic system area. But for the most part, the, the area will be cleared and, uh, there'll still be existing growth in the wetland areas.
But what about on the, you know, the, the westerly site where, where it's been opened up between the self-storage property and your property?
Oh, well, we're, we're clearing all the way to the property line. And I believe the self-storage place is basically cleared to the property line as well.
Yeah, I mean, this indicates that there's, there's a tree line that's still existing at, at least some number of feet. To, to the west.
Yeah, it looks like the storage place has a few feet of, yeah, so there's a little bit there.
Okay, but some of that's, some of that's been taken down. So I guess the question is, are you going to close that up again?
Um. Well, that was cut for the, the access point. Um, I guess we could put plantings back in if, if needed.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the Eastman and that currently I think the access point is a little bit. North of that southerly property line. But the access Eastman goes, you know, hugs that property line, so it's, it's not coming out in exactly the place where I think you've got the opening right now.
So no, it's not. There, there was a very large ledge outcropping right where the.
I can see that on the drawing.
So we just moved this, uh, page right to that. So I guess I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. So there was a huge amount of clearing that took place already just to create that access road. And, um, I was surprised by it, to, to be quite honest with you, uh, Kevin. Okay. Yeah, we cleared an area. It's, it's about as wide to drive dump trucks through. About a 30 foot width. Because if you're on Route 1, you can see a, a straight shot right now through all the way to Boston Road. There's, I mean, and, you know, as we talk about, you know. Light trespass mitigation, it's, um, you have to go out there at nighttime and take a look right now, see what the existing conditions are that have been created. That's going to have a concern to this board. Because that was not the perception or the intention, I think, of where the board stood. Uh, with the project that was there and now the, what's been created to create this access road. And now. You're going to be creating, uh, a space and so. There's going to be a lot of, uh, light going in all different directions now. Have you seen it at night, Kevin? No, I haven't been there at night. I mean, when I did first after the land clearing was completed, I did say, oh, wow, you can see right through to the, uh, transfer station now. You know, there, there is quite the, the straight shot through there. I don't particularly understand. Impact, I mean, I, I guess we're fortunate and part of my decision with the property is it's good that the, the, the butter. Directly across the street is a transfer station. Though I, I, I figure it doesn't really bother. That property. Kind of goes to the culture of the environment of the town and the community and the, the protected area that's very contiguous to that. And that's nearby and it has a lot of. Effects to a lot of different. Components of ecosystem and all that sort of stuff. Just something to. Think about. Yeah, I mean, our, our intention is to be a good neighbor in the community and, you know, build a nice structure and have a very clean facility. Good, 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 good. Alright, well, I'm glad that we could, uh, at least initially start to look at this. Good. Martha, so next steps, please.
Um, well, I guess, uh. See if there's any public comment. I do have a couple of other things here just to note.
Okay.
And, uh, after that, we might want to talk about scheduling a sidewalk.
Okay, great. So let's, uh, I think we can. We can conclude screen sharing. Thank you, Chris. Okay. Let's see, uh, any questions at this time, Leslie? You're good?
I'm not at this time.
Okay, and Woody, you're still good?
Yeah, you guys covered some things that I was thinking about in hindsight, but.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, uh, let's, uh, at this time, Martha, I think, to see if there's any public comment or questions.
I'm not seeing anybody raising their hands.
If anybody has any questions from the public, if you want to use the raise hand function. We can then, uh, ask, have you asked any questions or comments? And if not, this will be continued, of course, as well. Okay, I don't see anything. So let's talk about a sidewalk, Martha.
Alright, so. Woody reminded us, we already have one scheduled.
What date and time is that, Woody?
I have, uh.
Next Thursday at 11 o'clock.
He's also aware of that.
Field trip.
That's next Thursday.
That was the, that was the 10th, right, at 11? Yes.
Do we want to do a two for, where, where's that sidewalk again?
Coleman Road.
Yep. That's a little bit of a travel between those two points. You run to two in one day, do you want to do separate dates? I'm open for discussion. First, I'm going to ask Martha about, uh, if that's too complicated on your, your, your schedule to do that.
And it's.
It's a good amount of time.
Yeah, it is a good, I guess from my point of view, it'd probably be better if we could do it on two separate dates, but I'm, you know, if that doesn't work for the board members, that's fine.
Board members, any, any feeling or preference? Uh, Leslie?
I would prefer two separate dates so that, uh. I think it'd be. Maybe a little bit overwhelming to commit, uh, to memory all the, the information we're going to be, or the. That we're going to be looking at.
Okay, Woody?
I agree, two days apart with me.
Perfect, then let's look at, uh, a, a secondary date, uh, for another sidewalk, Martha. And we are going to have to run this with our other board members too that aren't here this evening.
Uh, that's true.
So, um.
Maybe, given everything, maybe it would make sense to look at, uh, let's see. You know, Tuesdays are out for Leslie, maybe Monday, the 14th.
Let's just take a peek. The 14th, okay. Okay, um, I would think late morning might be the best sort of time for this.
Yes.
Do we want to consider 11 AM? And is that, that gives us three weeks, is that right, Martha? That's about, we're, oh no, we're two weeks. We're already in December. Where am I?
Yeah, it's a week and a half, basically.
This has to be, uh, noticed too, right?
No, 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 no. Sightwalks are not meetings.
Okay, so we have flexibility with our board members if we do need to have, uh, changes. I'm not sure if, uh, there might be any conflicts on their, their, there's, there, there. And as well. So let's go for the 14th of, uh, December at 11 AM.
Okay.
Okay, I'm still in the, I apologize.
Okay, and that's subject to.
Yep.
Working for everybody.
Okay. Alright, uh, that being the case, when would we like to continue this hearing, Martha?
Actually, shall I note, um, the comments that we've received?
Oh, please do.
So I've already gone through the comments from the, uh, fire department. And as was already discussed, Bill noted that the commission is discussing this project at its meeting on December 8th. So he is, um, he's reserving comment now until after that meeting, at which time he will send. Us a memo with comments and concerns with the commission. The building commissioner had no comments, no issues, and neither did James Saret, our TBW director. We did receive one letter, email on November 20th from Richard Piccolo. Which was actually bringing up concerns about the lighting. And I think that's been forwarded to all the board members. That's all I'll have so far.
Okay, beautiful. Okay. Alright, thank you. That being the case, let's take a look at our, our, our next, uh, date for continuing this hearing.
So, I'm just gonna.
So we have already one for this, for the sixth, right? That'll be AL prime.
Yes, and I'm going to type that in right now.
Okay. Beautiful, great. And do we want to go for this on this, on the same date? That looks, that would work out perfectly. Okay, great. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to continue this to the 6th of January, 7:15?
Make a motion that we continue 84 Boston Road. Full occurring to the 6th, 6th of January. At 7:15.
Thank you, sir. Second, great. Any discussion on the motion? I don't see anything. Uh, Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Okay, chairs in favor as well, great. Uh, Chris, I, I'm sorry, Chris, hopefully that will work on your schedule as well and Kevin as well.
No, that's fine.
Works for me, thank you. Okay, excellent. Very good. Thanks, guys. We'll see you then and, uh, we'll have that sidewalk on the 14th.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see. So that concludes our public hearings. Martha, under old business, I see the word none, is that correct?
Yes, I, we, we thought it was going to very, be a very full night, so we kept the rest of the agenda pretty light.
Okay, that means that we're going to have, I think, a. Late, late evening, which is kind of unusual for us because we've been hammering them at late nights. Okay, um. Martha, do you have anything else for us to discuss tonight?
No, I don't.
Beautiful. Uh, Woody, do you have anything for tonight?
No, I don't.
Uh, Leslie?
Not tonight.
Wonderful. Um, then I guess entertain a motion to, uh, conclude our. This evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Sir, second. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, how say you, Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Uh, chairs in favor too. We have not had an hour-long meeting of the planning board. For how long, Martha?
Very long time.
Very long time. Very unusual. So, uh, thank you everyone for coming this evening. We appreciate the public support, uh, we, uh, and, uh, participation and wish everyone good holidays and good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.